All right, we're live.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Let's see. Michelle, do you want to lead this?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the people for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, without any limitations at all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for the brave men and women that protect this great nation. Troops, EMS, fire, all of them combined. Give them a thought when the fourth, as we celebrate with our families and friends, of what they have done in the past and what they will be doing in the future to keep us safe. Thank you.
What do you do this year? Hello? How are you? How are you?
I'd like to announce that the meeting is being recorded in livestream because I can see where there's... Last month, I asked Rick to contact East Whiteland regarding the traffic signal at King Road and Route 352 to ask them to contact PennDOT to see whether they would accept a four-phase system. I'm happy to announce that East Whiteland did send the letter, and they asked about two specific items. One, a four-phase traffic signal with separate signal phases for each leg of the intersection with the addition of vehicle detection on PA Route 352 approaches to allow the traffic signal to adjust between the PA Route 352 and King Road traffic signal phases based on traffic volume demand. And it says, "We understand that this may require increasing the length of the cycle for the signal." They also asked for the addition of vehicle detection on PA Route 352 approaches to allow the traffic signal to adjust between the PA Route 352 and King Road traffic signal phases based on traffic volume demand. We have not had a response yet. I'm hopeful that they will be positive with this so that we don't have to come up with a solution that requires taking people's property. The conditional use hearing for seizing woodworking has been continued until July 9th at 7:00 p.m.
Madam Chairman, I wanted to rework on that. I will not be at that meeting. So if there was another person, so you don't get into a problem. Just so you know.
Thank you. We'll open it up for public comment on non-agenda items. Is there anybody who has anything on it? Okay. We'll move on. We have no emergency services reports, no financial report. So we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion?
Madam Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we approve the June 18th and June 25th meeting minutes per our review and corrections that may have been called or emailed in.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any comments? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Treasurers' report.
Hello again. Did everybody have a chance to review the invoices? You'll see the debt payment sheets in the front. Anybody have any questions on any of the bills that John or Rick can answer?
The actual, actually, the very first one, John, I know that this one was voided and then reissued associated with the Applebrook Golf Club and the Golf Allens. And I just, there's one less, one guy was driven. Yeah. But I just, you know, I, what I wrote down here, I said, John, if you could explain the cost and are these 100% offset by residencies?
It's from the...
And I say that to the public too.
Land development agreement from 2000.
Yeah.
That the Applebrook Golf Club should make itself available for East Goshen residents three times a year and that the, it's essentially a passer. We don't treat it as a passer, but it's one-to-one offset.
Yeah, and I was pretty sure that was the case, but since I saw it this time, I just thought I would mention it and then publicly so residents know that the, you know, the unique arrangement that the township has with the Applebrook Golf Club, again, going back to land development approval era, and having access to a very nice club to play golf, paying for it, but through an arrangement through the township where the funds move through and then it's, as John says, it's offset. That was the one question. The, on the same page, the International Fireworks, the 8750, that is one that we will be reimbursed by Friends of...
No, not, not, not exactly. Quite honestly, Friends fundraising was disappointing this year. It raised about $18,500, which is, you know, only probably 60, 65% of the cost. You know, we struck out on IMX, we struck out on a couple of other large sort of businesses that typically give a lot of money. I was surprised, to be honest, in the current economic climate that we could do better. But, you know, as the new Friends group, maybe we didn't lean as staff. Jason and I maybe didn't lean on them as hard as maybe we should have. But, you know, lesson learned. Hopefully that's a one-time learning.
Okay, all right. Then there was, there was one on, let's see, this is listed as batch two of four, page five at the top. I think this is under general fund, but that was my question. It was, it was to Foley Inc. for the Marydell Pond we have for 8,900 and the...
Yeah, all of the costs of the Marydell is an operating cost.
Oh, it is. And we're doing it, and that's, that's in the budget, I think you put mine, but I lost track of that. All right, and...
And so, just so you're clear on the Marydell, you know, the pond filled up with one of the recent rains.
Yes.
However, there was a leak in the, or something, some, the outfall structure wasn't somehow snugly placed on top of the pond.
Was it drained?
So Mark is going back in next week and he's going to drain the pond again and then somehow fix it. I don't understand.
There's a leak in the pipe that runs through the...
So, so it has to be drained and then it's going to fill up again. Put an aerator in and then, you know, the wait begins.
Okay. Batch two of four, page nine, the expenditure to recreational resource for the top lot shade posts. I had, I was...
That was operating as well? No, yes, but that, remember, we talked about this, I think, last meeting.
Yes.
So the 99.7% plus or minus of the cost of that project is being reimbursed from assets that Friends of East Goshen has from the second round of the buyer break. So it's a, it's a one-off. I mean, do we, do we depreciate it? Actually, that's a good question. Probably not.
Okay. And the, let's see, the, I see where the expense came in for recently for the capital, the capital related, they'll work on the best of view. That's good. Looks nice. Piece of change. And then the other one I noticed was, this is a little bit of... The Marydell Pond is using some stabilization, some defining boulders to create the landscape rack. And if you don't think boulders are expensive, try and buy a few, not millstone boulders.
Well, wait a second, you're talking about the Smith here.
It said Smith, Scott, the Marydell Pond boulders.
So that's, yeah, I mean, we, I think we had budgeted a line item originally, like $28,000 for boulders. And so basically through a combination of, you know, Scott and Scott Smith is a developer, you know, he's just unloading boulders. We got some from a couple of other random construction sites, so we...
It was a pretty good value.
And moreover, we have, as I understand it, we have now sort of extra boulders and so some of those can be used for protein and nutrition.
Okay, good. Just, just something I think of. That's, that's all I have, just a couple of comments and observations. Thank you, John.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'm chairman. I moving graciously accept the receipts and approve the expenditures as presented in the register. Once we approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We'll move over to new business.
Madam Chairman, the board members, the first slide is the emergency access agreement for Cornwallis Drive. Hershey's Mill. They've agreed to allow us to build a road across their property and use their, go through their property. Motion, what's my fee?
I got, yes, two.
Still, I second. Why not?
Why not? Part of this agreement says, "In the event of an emergency, a locked gate is opened allowing people from Cornwallis to go through Hershey's Mill and go out the east gate." It also allows people to go, come in through the east gate if Cornwallis is blocked and they can't get in any other way. And in order to do that, since these people do not have Hershey's Mill tags, I spoke with Rick and we took, figured out one way of handling it would be to have someone at the gate in, when there's this emergency situation, to give them access. And that made me...
Madam Chair, I would like to mention that the real reason that this was started in the past was for emergency vehicles if needed. If we had some sort of a problem at 352 of Cornwallis, that neighborhood virtually would not have fire protection availability. So this has been a long, long, well-fought battle.
Many years.
To get emergency residential access when needed, fine. In my opinion, more importantly, for EMS and fire safety.
Yes, and as Carmen said, this is a many-year project. This did not come easily.
Lot of pain. Madam Chairman, I move we authorize the chair to execute the easement for the emergency access for Cornwallis Drive.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to make the president to send a thank you letter to the National Association for Your Cooperation.
That's a, that's a good idea.
I mean, I've been part of, some of the party.
Yeah.
And they have been very cooperative and, believe it or not, we're kind of infringing upon their territory. And but as you only solve this problem, and they've been very cooperative for this, I think they would sort of recognize it.
And I think it towards noting if I'm correct, at least the way I read the easement, they're, they're all altruistic on their part. There's no consideration.
$1.
$1, so that's good neighbors. When you share a common interest, you don't necessarily always have to get a piece of change for giving up a little bit to get something in exchange for what will be a benefit to all, so that's...
It's definitely a major safety issue.
So thanks to your work on that, guys. I know you've been doing that long before Dave and I were on the board. I said David.
Okay. Next, consider replacement of two dump trucks.
There's a memo from Mark to replace two of the dump trucks. And he anticipates that we'll be able to, there is people that are interested in them. So we'll put them out on municipal bid and... Do you see why that applies?
If that's the intention, you need to indicate that in the motion. The way the motion's drafted does not anticipate any... I mean, we could do that when the trucks were delivered in nine months, but, so we don't have to go through that.
No, one motion or two?
One motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we purchase two Peterbilt 348S from Geel Sayer in the amount of $357, $524. Realizing when the vehicles come in, we will be putting our present vehicles on unit bid to get the highest purchase value that we can.
Is there a second?
Yeah, that works too.
Comments? All in favor? Motion is approved.
I make a note regarding municipal bid. Well, recently in East Bradford, we put a vehicle, not one of our larger trucks on sale. We thought with municipal bid, unit bid, and thought that we might get maybe $10,000 or $12,000. By the time the bidding was done, we were over $18,000. So it's been a very good performer. And so I think a lot of people look at municipalities like these and they recognize they've been well cared for so that you get maximum value of these trade and it offsets obviously our, our capital, new cost. Very positive.
Michael, not to bore anybody, but there was a lot of complaints a couple of years ago. The police vehicles, when we sell them, we used to keep them for such high mileage. By the time we would get around to selling them, we would put basically $5,000, $6,000, $700. By increasing or by decreasing the replacement years, we, I don't know what the figures are, but we get many, many, many thousands of dollars more for the vehicles before, because we're getting rid of them before the engines are like sitting in the trunk and, yeah, transmissions are hanging on the ground.
Smart.
All right, next. Consider donation of old gator to Goshen Country Fair.
This will be my last one for the evening. Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we donate the existing gator we have, since we replaced it, to the Goshen Fire Company. But they can use it for fire company access. They can also use it for the fair when needed. It's not of tremendous value by the time we get rid of this particular vehicle. So a donation to the fire company, I think, is prudent.
I'll second that. That was a motion. Carmen, that was a motion. I would, I would...
Comments? All in favor?
Another good example, community sharing, similar to what we just were saying about the Hershey's Mill Master Association. It's a good way to share amongst the community without everyone benefiting and not trying to agree with the last dollar of everything needed. It's a good one, that very...
Next, consider recommendation that all ABC packets be printed double-sided.
Yeah, first of all, I don't want to belabor this one. I do. But I mean, I think, you know, certainly serving, serving on the energy task force for CAG and all of the work Sustainability Commission's doing. And it worked at other places on planet where craning stuff, double-sided was standard. I think we need to enter the 20th century in East Goshen township, let alone the 21st. And, you know, change it. There's not huge cost savings. I estimate we'd save three trees a year. But it's the way that people do business, and frankly, the way that people do business in the 21st century isn't paper at all. I don't want to harp on this too long because it's, it's, it's not worth. It's not worth me falling my sword about, but I, I do also do that.
I'd like to pick up from where you left off there, John, because I, I had written down here, additional staff time, question mark, versus $100, $120 in materials that were saving. I said, or why not go completely electronic and each supervisor print out what they would like for the meeting on their own? Or request staff to print out a full copy of the agenda and have it available here if we need to review it. But use our electronic devices and, and, I mean, the great thing about the way you do the agendas each month is that every, everybody sees everything and you can print out pieces of it. Why not do that and, and contain it to ourselves and we use our, and we use our electronic devices? That's sustainability.
Six years ago, when I first came on the board, I was asked whether I wanted paper copies or not. Or, did that happen with you and David?
Uh, I, you might have asked whether you wanted paper or not. I don't, I don't recall. But, but it's easy for me to bring a laptop in here and just the way you guys use it. But I don't know how everybody feels, but I just figured that's a more valuable, sustainable change if we're going to do something here as opposed to just printing on both sides.
Yeah, I, I'm liaison to the Sustainability Advisory Committee. And, you know, I support this motion. And, and the Sustainability Committee also is looking at Board Effect and other electronic ways that, you know, in my career, in both my business and my volunteer work, we used, in two cases, Board Effect, we put nothing. Everything was done on a, on a computer screen. It's indexed. It's easy to follow, really easy to do. So I would, you know, I would rather use my computer than get those big packets. So obviously there are things like plot plans and things like that that we can't.
I mean, just, and there's, and there's a lot of work to think about the vehicles, the, the staff that's dropping these packets off us every week. It's, it's a tremendous service for public servants like us that are, that are serving and to have the packet delivered to us and read it. I know in East Bradford, we go, we use completely electronic there. It's all, it's all on the, I mean, there's things printed out, obviously, but not the, not the extended packets. And that's not, there's no criticism. I'm just looking, if we're looking to make some green change and sustainable changes, maybe it's something to think about. Maybe we don't make the change until the beginning of the new year. I don't know. But I'm sorry, Marty, I interrupted.
I just wanted to say that I have no, I support this. But I will say there, there are individuals that are used to a, the old way, so to speak. And the accommodation has to be made for those, and that person is to be allowed away. I don't talk in, I don't talk in the 20th, in the 21st century. I talk in the 19th century. And I'm used to, I'm used to this. So I think we should do this before doing this, but there's going to be a way of least accommodating.
So why don't, I think this is picking up on what Mike and David are saying. Why don't we email every single ABC member and ask them for their preference about how they'd like to receive materials?
I believe most now, the planning commission, the supervisors, the authority, because they pay for it. Everybody else gets electronic. But we could, if those of you who want electronically, we could just, we will not, we should not give you the package. Yeah, so you can bring, you can bring your iPod and laptop. We can make the change.
Yeah, that would be my thought.
I'm ready to make the change.
Okay.
But, but I would like to, I would like to wait there because Board Effect, rather than getting it electronic, because if I'm sitting there with my computer, I'm searching for documents, Board Effect allows you to tab, so I can just click on the next agenda and it drops all the documents down. So we wait until we...
We get that set up. But it's something you guys can do. I think that's great. I'm on board.
I think it's great to make it effective January 1st of 2020.
Well, no, you would be affected, that's why.
Someone won't have to deal with it.
I, I can tell you for a fact, because I'm, I'm somebody, well, let's put it this way. They do make a exception for my case, I must say. But the Chester County Planning Commission does this, and they have a system that you go right down in order. They have, I don't know how they do it, I don't know what's the background of it. I don't know how much time it takes for anything else to set it up. But there's, there's a bulletproof when it comes to that. But they do take it and send me a copy of the agenda and I will use it all the time and I never go near the computer. So, rent a room, that's the way I do it, and I'm used to doing it that way, and they accommodate it that. I think as time moves on, there'll be nobody left that's going to be able to, that's going to want to do it that way. And I think we should just roll right into this thing. As long as, at least one person can be accommodated in an individual alternative.
Yeah, can I ask, I'd like to say, David, talk to Susan and make sure Susan's comfortable and then maybe that's, obviously this September, but sometime soon. And then we'll give all the members of the three ABCs that we talked about, Board, Municipal Authority, Planning Commission, would just send an email and say, "How do you want your stuff moved forward?"
And note one, just we'll step in, this is scheduled for...
Not to belay it, but can I ask you a question? When I was in the solid waste authority, everything was electronic. But what they had was not like what we get. Once I opened it, I think what David was mentioning, maybe everything dropped into individual folders. So I had an agenda that I could keep on the screen, but then I had 30 or 40 folders for a packet. That's about that, really, for the authority, pretty thick. But I didn't have to take FaceTime, well, it's called FaceTime, while you're sitting here going through the computer, because you just hit one folder and the whole thing comes up. That's what you're talking about.
Yeah, that's what Board Effect, there are a couple of the time.
Hey, Marty, in many respects, I'm with you. I, I, I can, I can read the New York Times online, but I like to, I like to ruffle the papers and, you know, and shake the paper. I mean, I like to, so I get it. I, I appreciate that.
The other thing that Board Effect allows you to do is make rotations. So if you're reading through the tear and you want to think about something, you can make rotations on the document, so that...
Put red if you want to say add, highlight. Yeah, it's a nice feature that... All right, good.
Do we need a motion or do we just want to delay?
Well, why don't we let John see, do some investigation before we decide exactly what we want to do.
Okay. I, I would think that we, it probably should be a motion to the effect that we can work through this system recognizing the conversation here. But to be implemented at the, when the, when the staff feels comfortable that they have a system that's going to be used by everybody, that would be my motion, definitely.
Yeah, I'm, I'm right with you. If that's a motion, I'll second it. However you want to write it down.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
But step nine, just walk.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consider public comments on the MS4 plan.
As you know, as you were to catch up as an MS4 plan, which stands for municipal separate sanitary sewer system, sewer systems. Long story short is, we're required to have one. We have a new permit. We're required to adopt a pollution reduction plan. Fortunately, the project for Hershey's Mill Dam and Milltown Reservoir will both satisfy our requirements for the permanent cycle. And we also have six other minimum control measures that we implement. Public education outreach. We send out mailings to building permits, send out letters to restaurants. Public involvement participation. We have the community day, cleanup day. Conservancy board does some tree planting. Illicit, illicit disorder detection. We monitor, have to check the outfalls from a retention basis on a regular basis, once, at least once every permanent cycle. And we have a program in place. Somebody calls about, you know, a silver spill or something, we go out and investigate it. And then we have the construction, the post-construction runoff control. And that's why today, when you put in a shed, you have to have stone underneath of it or you have to put stormwater in. It's all tied into that. And that's also why if you have a stormwater facility on your property, you have to, has to be inspected, whether it's inspected by the township or whether it's inspected by itself. The last but not least is, we do put on some educational programs here. Come as a missing, we teach people how to fuel a vehicle, especially to know how to refill it. How, what to look for when they, you know, inspect the, when the guy street, when the street sweeper's house sweeping the streets, he looks at the retention, the MLS, and the work is begun and stowed and repaired. So this information is available on our website, but if they made any comments or questions, we can answer them. But we do do this at least once a year.
And this, this permit will go, as you say, here, it goes from March 15th to 23rd. So we do, it's an annual review of the permit.
We have, it's like, it's, it's basically, it's roughly the same permit you would get for a survey.
This is for...
Yeah. I, I think we should be pointing out to everybody, the MS4 permitting process, ignoring this with it, that, that'll put you bored asleep in about 30 seconds. The problem is though for us, that right now, we are affected by it, but not like some townships are. However, as time marches on, we're going to have greater and greater costs associated with MS4 and you have to be prepared for it. And it's not something that you can say yes or no to. You're obligated to do this. So I think it's a cautionary comment that I'm making, but same, at the same time, if Rick is outlining exactly where we are today and what we need to do.
Marty, that's a good comment. I think you were kind. This is an unfunded mandate by the state. Through the Clean Water Act, it's then disseminated down to each state to their respective departments of environmental resources or natural resources. And while you may think that some people want to go to sleep, I'm ready to storm the Bastille over the way the program has been administered over these last 10 years. There's been a lot of movement... There's been a lot of moving targets. I think East Coast has done a terrific job and were really poised to be able to accommodate their mandate, in this case, 10% sediment reduction. And then up the other world I live in, it's more onerous than that and nearly impossible to achieve compliance based upon the program that they've indicated for us.
And it's a constantly moving target.
Yes, it is.
What was acceptable three years ago, or two years ago, or one year ago is no longer acceptable.
And I think too, this is really important, and people should realize this. Rick mentioned the fact that this complies with some of the requirements that we have under a two dams. So what's happening is, because we're able to use this, it all sets spending the money in another way that would have to accomplish the same result. So there is an offset to this with respect to the dam, although we didn't, we did not choose to use this as a, as a attraction from the dam. We just kept it, kept it big, because nobody would tell we're talking about it anyway. But the point of the matter is, it becomes very useful for us in terms of the dam, in terms of meeting this requirement.
And by the way, my comment, I don't mean to sound like I'm anti-program associated with taking care of environment, just the opposite. But it's the way things are administered sometimes and mandated in many respects with a stick more than a carrot. So it's just the way it's been implemented over the last decade that I am more aroused about. The objectives are smart and the way we have to go. So I just wanted to clear my name for the record.
Are there any comments from the floor? All right, consider a recommendation on the Pennsylvania P U C rulemaking order.
If you recall, I guess it was about three weeks ago, the P U C put out two notices. One, an advance notice of rulemaking, and they're looking ahead of us, basically looking for comments on pipeline safety requirements. And basically, it's a catch-all, they're asking for public comments for ways that they, the P U C could approve the safety, pipeline safety. And Kenardra's citing was not out of the legislature, but it also put out a rule for financial reporting for pipelines. And this, like, in this instance, they actually had the draft and proposed rule, and essentially you'll make pipeline transportation, these are, yeah, transportation pipelines, follow the same requirements that Aqua, Pico, and Altal and Cloud were reporting, their financial. Both of these, the first one had a 20-day comment period, the second one had a third-day comment period, and the comment period actually started Saturday when it was published to the PA Bulletin. So the Pipeline Task Force is currently reviewing the first one, which is the more safety-related, but they did discuss the financial reporting one at their meeting this Thursday, and they believe it has a lot of merit, and they would recommend that the board send a letter to the P U C supporting this mission.
Just the essence of the comments on the financial reporting requirements, basically takes all the requirements for the depreciation studies, the life expectancy studies that apply to other utilities from Public Utility Commission, and applies them to oil and gas industry and to transportation, so our pipelines would be included. So that's the essence of what they're asking for comments on. So what the Pipeline Task Force is asking that the board support that by basically writing a letter to the P U C supporting, including oil and gas and gas transportation lines in the financial reporting requirements for Public Utility Commission.
What's good for the goose is good for the gander. If you want to be a P U C, and got a certificate of convenience, you do what the other utilities do, or you decide you're not going to be a public utility. So all in support of that.
Okay, could I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
Hey, Rick, this is independent of the moment. You only want to just mention to the people what the other one is too.
I'm going to talk a little bit about the other one. So the motion would be to authorize staff to send a letter to the P U C on behalf of the board of supervisors, supporting the proposed changes on docket number L 20193010270, the financial reporting requirements.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion here, discussion from the floor?
Air footstep.
Your foot pops. I stopped at 14:30 randomly, going for my 100%, Marty. Let us hear back. I am stunned that the P U C didn't apply standards to the pipeline industry when they declared that the pipelines, you know, grow energy transfer was actually a public utility. So to be perfectly clear, this is going to now make any gas or oil or any other natural fuel transmission, thank you, that would be now subject to all the P U C requirements that everybody else's. Is that correct?
Financial.
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 So.
And device studies, et cetera.
This is, yeah, specific to their order regarding financial reporting requirements. Now, we'll talk about that.
Is that the next one?
We're talking about the other.
Yes, the next part, which will be more nuts and bolts, pepper and spice.
I wasn't clear then, okay.
Okay. Let's have a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mrs. Jerry.
Okay, just briefly, I just want to report on the second document. It is more the public safety document, and not only public safety, but it covers construction, it actually does imply comments on citing. And so what the Pipeline Task Force has done is, we're taking that order, and we've broken it down into the nine categories that they're asking for comments on. And then at the end, interestingly enough, they just opened it up with 14 more categories. I think there's a total of 23, where they're asking for public comment. And these are all regarding, you know, construction, noise ordinances, safety, operational issues. So it's very comprehensive. And when I say, they didn't restrict it, at the end, they said, and anything else that they do want to comment on. So it's a very, very broad request. So you all can, you know, go on the state's, P U C's website and look at it and make public comments. The Pipeline Task Force has created a shared document for all the task force members, and we broke down all of the headings of all the categories in the comments. We have a group document, we're all putting our information into each one of those categories, and then we'll compile those. We have 60 days to do it. We only got 30 days on this one, which is why we want to get that, and we're simple. So within the next 60 days, the Pipeline Task Force will be collecting those comments from the members of the task force, compile them, and then make a submission to the P U C with our comments.
And there is value added here from our committee.
It's tremendous. Rick and I are both on the K O task force, this story many months ago, about this. We're actually, some of the voters behind this. I would suggest, now that I know what you're doing over there, that we, the board, send a uniform document back that expresses not only Rick and my own opinions, but attitude or views it in, in other words, yours is going to come to us anyway. That's right. I think we need to incorporate everything under one document, so there's a lot of stuff going on all over the place. We can refer to it by names if we want to, or whatever we want to do. But I think it's very important, because we're probably going to have, I would suspect that based on what I know now, we may have more comments than anybody else except for some large organization. So I think it's a great, great thing that the, that our task force is doing, and I think we have to be prepared to make sure we have a full discussion about this, because it's probably the one-shot time that they will, they will do this for a long period of time.
Yeah, I see.
And the other thing that's important to remember when you're going along, the P U C has its own rules and regulations, and they have to stick with that. They do not make, if someone in the legislature is responsible for something, you've got to do that issue through the legislature. So this is a dual, this is a dual way of going about it. So this is only related to the P U C. Anything that's in the hands of the legislators, this is not related to. So you have to work with individual legislators if you want to make changes to that, which is generally deciding stuff, but not all the time, generally deciding something like that, that is legislative. This is P U C activities in order to do, basically, David's absolutely right, it's around safety, but there's more to it than just safety. And it has with operation, it has with construction, it has with the whole process that you, they has, it has to use with what, what type of information we should be provided as a township that's affected by this, in terms of the integrity management and all kinds of other things. So there's going to be a lot of discussion, but I suspect that these person may be one of the ones that have more comments than anybody else, which I think is a good thing.
Again, this is kind of a one-shot opportunity, as you mentioned, Marty. So the fact that the task force is taking us on, it sounds like we really organized the, and the composition, the tenor of the P U C on these matters of pipelines, infrastructure and transmission, have evolved more in the last couple of years to begin to listen to the citizens, I think more than the previous group when a gentleman who's now with the federal level was on the commission. And I don't know this for a fact, David, but one of the comments we're going to have, it will be void of the citing, that, were they open to comments on citing?
They were.
Okay. That, to me, that is the gist of why we've been discussing this for four years. The citing has been the foul from the very beginning. So if anything we can do to improve that review process or have any more input in it, not just us, but Pennsylvania, the agency for these things, I think that'd be great.
Yeah, I think the issue of this word is evidence that P U C is hearing the citizens of Pennsylvania and want to be proactive in public comment. Anecdotally, I just need to tell you a story. I was flying back from Duluth, Minnesota, to Chicago, sitting next door to a woman in a crowded plane, and I tend to chat up my seatmates. And whether they want to talk or not.
It's a disease, David.
Some people just open a book, and I get it. So I was talking to this woman, and sharing a little bit about why we were traveling and so on, and she was coming back from running a half marathon in Duluth. And so she said, are you traveling on business? And I said, no, traveling, I'm a player. And I said, how about you? And she said, I just came back from running a marathon. I said, what do you do for a living? And she said, I'm a civil engineer. And I said, what kind, what kind of work do you do? And she said, well, I'm a pipeline inspector. And I said, do you work for Finza? And she said, how do you know what Finza is?
And at that point, I was going, whoa.
At that point, I picked her brain for one hour and 15 minutes of that public comment with the P U C. So I've got some gems that will be, that will be added to the document. So I just thought that fate sat me next to a Finza pipeline inspector.
Well, I don't know you do.
She has now submitted her signature, national programming aspect. They understand that she's a place, because that means no longer can submit or compensation from that.
All right, let's move on.
Very good now, very good. Good work. Yeah, you're right.
We're going to consider replacement of code department vehicle.
Yes, and a suggestion of, some of the superbodies, they recommended we purchase a Ford Escape, which has a hybrid, hybrid motor from Austin's Ford, $29,750, and then sell the used Ford Ranger on the business.
Yeah, and so to clarify, it's the used, used one. So the existing 2009 Ranger would go to Steve Walker, who uses it for errands. The one, the 2000 Ranger that Steve drives now would go on business, so it probably would catch up.
You know, the neat thing about this vehicle, I was looking, reading about a little bit, 40 miles per gallon. It, you can plug it into either a 110 or a 240. You give it in a 240, you get a three and a half hour charge. The 110, it takes, it requires overnight. But if you run it on all electric, I know it doesn't sound like a lot compared to a Tesla, but you can get 30 mile range on all electric and, you know, doing code work, et cetera, around the township, you know, you can cover some territory on all electric.
This isn't a plug-in, just to clarify. I can't remember if it's, they're not doing it until 2021.
Ah, okay. Because I.
Yeah. There will be a plug-in hybrid, but not until 2021. One of the, I misrepresent something. It's not, I said, the reason we're going with the Ford and not the Toyota we talked about in the budget development was because all the other cars, the trucks are Ford, it's easier to mechanic, that's kind of a lie. But I guess there's just a preference for Ford. But I would say this, the Toyota around Ford hybrid that we originally talked about is made in Ontario, but this is made in Kentucky, so America first.
Where's Susskind Square, David?
Austin.
Where is it? Kennet Square. Coastal, Coastal. My hometown. This is, this is the B, a little area now. When you get bitches like this that are very close together, not much of a difference. The question becomes is, should we factor in the neighbors? Because obviously, you know, this ministered them, and I'm not suggesting what we do or don't, I'm just saying that.
We got, there's an $1,100 difference on a, on a, on a Ford. If you got a $1,100 on.
I'm not saying what you do, I'm just raising the issue.
I get, I get.
I think some, and I'm not saying this was the one, but sometimes you have to think of it in that regard, but I'm not sure if this is that situation. But in N S M A, they are about, what, $1,000 cheaper.
If they're both qualified bids, however you determine qualified, and there's no major omission, you have to, you have to accept a little bit. But I appreciate what you're saying, Marty.
But they're both, they're under Co-Stars, but I think there's a difference between purchasing something from the, I use the word mom and pop Walmart shop that's located in East Coast and Township, as opposed to Brad Beans, who has multiple Ford dealers throughout the region. I mean, it's not like they're in East Coast, and it's not like it's, they're a major dealership.
I don't agree with you, you should not be, because we should do it necessarily in this case, but we should be conscious of it. When some of these bids come through, that there is not a significant difference.
I just made a quick comment. This is not a plug-in hybrid.
That is correct. No, which guy got confused?
But the Sustainability Advisory Committee is researching and would like to begin to think about pure electric and eventually plug-in hybrids or pure electric vehicles going forward. You know, barring any huge difference in cost, we're starting to see even the Tesla 3, coming into $35,000 range for the single motor Tesla. So it's something that we need to think about. And we're also looking at putting plugs, type two plugs, in the municipality for, for used by our staff and by residents. Stay tuned on that, just a comment.
Could I have a motion?
Madam Chair, we purchased a 2020 Ford Escape Hybrid from Austin's Ford, and the amount is $29,750, and sell the used Ford Ranger on the union.
Second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye. We have, Madam Chair, we have thirty.
Did you vote?
Did you hear me vote? Did you hear me say aye?
I thought I did.
You didn't hear me say aye.
Okay. All opposed?
Oh, he works for Brad.
No, that's not, no, that's not the reason. I am a shuttle driver for Brad Beans, but that's not my reason for abstaining. I will keep my mouth shut, because I told Madam Chair, man, I've gone after the last motion we made. I'm abstaining.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It has nothing to do with employment, and it's not really employment, it's just to keep you.
We have two other matters. The first is, as you know, we're managed, we have a pilot bike trail, and that has a system ECMS, engineering, engineering and construction. Engineering and Construction Management System, electronic system for processing documents. Anyway, the DRV DC has suggested, recommended that we need to set up accounts specifically for the Payway Pipe Trail. And the draft motion would be is that to approve a resolution to authorize myself, the manager, and Captain Assistant Manager John to sign and test grant documents, create agreements, and Commonwealth would be, yes, Payway Pipe Segment C, D, and E.
I need a motion.
Wait a minute, Rick, this will make sure that we're on the same page. Is this, after the board does this action, we're just?
The board has accepted the agreements, and that's now, so now it's moved over.
We've done our, yes.
Glad to make that motion.
So I move that the board approve the resolution authorizing the township manager and assistant township manager to sign and test grant contracts and grant agreements with Commonwealth and its agencies for the Payway Pipe Trail Project Segment C, D, and E.
That was Marty's motion.
Marty?
I just wanted to be clear.
Okay, so are you?
I'll second that motion, but I articulated the motion.
Why you second the motion?
I'll second that, the motion I just made.
I didn't take it personally, David.
Any redemotions?
Any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Abstain?
You heard an aye on that.
The second action is, at your meeting on May twenty-eighth, we, the board, approved various trail easements for the Payway Pipe Trail. We also authorized the condemnation of the deed properties easement. Even though Kristen passed on that she did have a verbal confirmation from Chip Con that he was okay with it. So we finally did get the appropriate documents from Kristen. And so now we need to have a motion authorized. There's a motion to authorize the chair to board to authorize here the X two agreements, X two agreements for the trail.
Is there a?
With the condemnation part, we're now.
Segment C, D, and E.
David, hurry up, you can make that motion.
I'll make that motion, what Rick just said.
I'd be happy to second that motion.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Last, I distributed a comment to the board. West Whiteland Township is going to adopt official map. It came in, I guess it was yesterday's mail. Anyway, so I'm just passing it on to you for your review. Our planning, they're looking for comments back by August fifth, which is before your first meeting in August. So the planning commission will look at it next, I guess, next week. And they should be in a position to make a recommendation for you in time for your meeting on the sixteenth.
Anytime we can take a look at it.
We can take a look at it.
That's all we got.
That's it.
I have, I have a lady too.
I have, under any other matter?
Yes, that's for you.
I would like to thank Park and Rec, Jason, Staff, Public Works, and everybody for an event. This past weekend at the Park for Community Day, it was extremely challenging with the weather. Numerous changes had to be made. I was with Jason starting about noon time. And it was, it was amazing that it went off the way it did. But I again would like to thank everybody involved. I would like to thank those sponsors. One of them is with us this evening, sitting in the back. But hopefully, next year, the weather will be a little bit more cooperative. But again, thank you for a very nice community day.
And I will make a comment that, considering all the difficulties, it was wonderful. And I enjoyed it, my family enjoyed it, and I think everybody who attended enjoyed it and appreciated the efforts that Jason and everyone else was making to have it occur despite the weather, despite all the complications.
I have one item I'd like to bring up. It has to do with the intersection that came in three fifty-two. And there was an indication here of sending out a letter to some of the property owners along the corridor there. And I just wonder if this might be premature to let this settle a little bit instead of stirring it up with those residents so we know where we're going on this matter. Am I missing the vote on something?
I don't think, that was for a take comment, that's why I had to leave.
No.
Were we going to, that wasn't that for take comment information? I really didn't read it, we got it this evening.
Oh, I told, East Whiteland has reached out to their residents, let them know where they're around the project. And that was directly affected. And so all we have is, we had, we sent these people, we sent, everybody went out, the initial letter sent, we're considering various things.
Yeah.
However, we had, other than one gentleman, we had not heard anything from the people that were directly affected by this project. So I thought it was important to let them know exactly where we are today. Just, I, I, I agree. Obviously, this information is on the website, but based on, based on phone calls that I get during the day, because a lot of people, wherever, don't go to the website or are aware of the website.
Okay.
And so therefore, you know, I'm still explaining much to know to us.
I hear you.
So that's why I thought, if they take a letter from us, then they know exactly where you are.
And then I, I know that in speaking to residents, one of the things that they really, really, really like about East Ocean is our transparency. I think this adds to it, let people know where we are and, and so they don't have surprises later.
And I get it, I guess when I read it the other night, I just thought, oh, it seemed like we're stirring the pot before we go. But, okay, but proactively and then based upon what you said, I accept that, I just wanted to do it there. Thanks, I appreciate it.
I think it's important, the last meeting I was at, I had received, just walking around, basically. I never, I never had gotten so many people stop me and ask me questions about something that was involved in this, which was this particular fight or this particular intersection. This has generated a lot of interest. And I think more people are just now waiting to see what's going to happen. And I can tell you that from my own experience with those people, they were most interested in the full way, the situation. They, they're, it would take so much playing by somebody, if in fact they're trying to stand, because they're going to want to go live. I just, I just throw that out there. But Mike, I think that we have, a moment ago, we decided that there are times when you might not have the share of information. But those times are few and far between. And it's much better to get everything out there. And if people come and they have questions and so forth, you can address them. You know, I think the proactive approaches we had, I think in this particular incident, it so happens that it was of high transparency, that East Ocean has more credibility in what we say regarding that intersection than East Whiteland had. Now, they may have overcome that, but at least initially, that was, that's my feeling. And that was my feeling, and I think we were there too, as a matter of fact. So I think that Ricky, I'm glad that Ricky did, yeah, Janet was involved in it.
Yeah.
I think it's great because, and I think if Janet continues that conversation with us in East Whiteland, it would be very helpful. Because I do think we need to keep people updating on this because they're just waiting to see what's going to happen. And I don't think, I hope that by the time September or October goes around, there is some conclusion to this because I don't think they should drag on.
We need to hear from Penda. I think that's, that's the next step.
And that's, that's why I was kind of in the twenties there, whether we wait to hear from Penda before it goes out and then send. But not, I'm trying to hold it back, but the more, you know, our, our protocols and our outreach is going to continue to advance, be more interactive with the citizens as we go forward these next years. And the more, the better.
And the more, the better.
Is there, are there any?
Yeah, I have, oh, sorry, comments.
I just have one other, any other matter? A reminder, July eleventh at six o'clock at the West Whiteland Township Building, Cadmus Consulting Group will be holding its visioning session for all members of the public regarding the Clean Energy Transition Plan. So there is an event, brand registration, there's information on how to register on our website. Encourage everybody to attend and put in their ten cents, contribute by night.
Any other comments from the table? Any comments from the unions? I have a motion.
I would like to say firstly, have a safe Fourth of July for you and your families. Then I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Same here. Good evening, state, everybody.